So you enable them both and then you turn off the intermission, right?
Yes.
What's the delay today? Where is the stream supposed to be? Now under board?
Under, it's under planning room.
Oh, gotcha.
I'll turn it on here. On my phone too.
And this is board adjustment or planning permission?
Huh.
Okay. Okay, I'm seeing myself.
Okay, so it's working?
Yep. Better. Where is it?
It's, there's a delay. On the, on the, on the stream there's only a little bit of delay.
So you, you don't have to...
I don't know if you want this one on the stream. I think they want to see that.
They're looking at the board. Oh wow, it's a delay.
Yeah. Because the big... How do you want the stream to look? Them looking at the board and the little one there?
It's, it's a delay.
I think you, can you do it the other way?
Try, yep.
Because you just, you can't see what's... What the writing is on that.
Um, right, I'm just trying to think of how...
Sure.
I need the camera.
That money. Standing in there. There, just walk right now.
Yeah.
That room over there is that as loud as it will go.
Probably not.
Okay, because that's what... The one time we had to use it to complain was that even when you're sitting in that room, it couldn't hear very well.
Did that switch though?
No. Whoa, now it just did, now it just did.
So now we have the little...
So I've got that and we're picture, picture up in the corner.
Perfect.
Right here.
Okay.
Test one two, test one two, test one two, test one two.
How do you know which of these?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe not one.
Um, your name should be the second one, you know, forty three is good.
Money getting here.
Moved up the camera.
That's what I was hearing.
Rumors, yeah.
Sometimes it's selected.
Yep. I think, I think I'm ready if everybody else is ready. We've got microphones on. Make sure at least, recording? Okay, I think, I think we're ready then.
All right, going to call the meeting to order. Would all please rise for a flag pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which expands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So then we just take a little pause while the sirens are going off and then we'll get back to it. We don't need to go hide or, okay.
I get it.
All right, like to welcome you all to tonight's meeting. Our first thing I'm going to do is introduce the staff and board members. Starting over here on my right, we have Adam Osford, Sue Bertrand. I'm Jim Pratt. Got Ken Hovit, George Sutton, Lloyd Graves, Roger Hendrickson, and Commissioner Tim Denny. First thing we need to do is approve the minutes from the last meeting. Any additions, corrections? Everybody get a chance to look them over?
Move to approve.
We got a motion by Ken. Is there a second?
There'll be.
Second by Roger. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carried. No changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All right. Then we will go on to our first agenda item, which is the Todd County Feedlot Ordinance revisions.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Just one, one quick announcement. There is a tornado drill again tonight at 6:45. So you can just hang tight. We'll let the sirens be done and then continue on. So don't be alarmed. Back to the topic at hand here. This is, I think, the fourth or fifth month we've been at this. So we're narrowing it down to the final pieces here. The one piece we need to look at in section nine eleven is what is now part P, the performance standards. The second one there, what would, what had been proposed was that, that we have seven months' capacity for any existing, an expansion to a feedlot. As an existing liquid manure handling system would need to have seven months' storage in order to issue the permit. Previously, it just said that you need to have storage capacity to accommodate the increase. It didn't give a specific number, just that we needed to make sure that there was adequate storage. Discussions amongst us in the office and in others, I think it's important that we look at those side by side to make sure that that's the right direction to go. With smaller dairies as an example, if they do not, if they're not able to meet that seven months' storage with their existing manure storage, their, the, the section, the part one right before would then require them to expand to have 12 months' storage for that expansion number. And that may be cost prohibitive. And in a world where dairy, the dairy industry is struggling already, is that something that the county board wants to enact? Obviously, cost share and other options are out there, but that may not always be the case. So I think it's important that we have a discussion about the need for that seven months' storage or is kind of the old version or some combination of the two, what that, that one section of the ordinance needs to be. So what I have here, that, that top part is the, is in our existing ordinance now. The O R, below the O R, is what we had proposed. So we're kind of comparing those side by side. We had a number of definitions here that we looked at. The hobby farm definition, those are just definitions, just from a simple Google search that I put together. The reason we thought it may be necessary to create a hobby farm definition is because our zoning district descriptions use the term hobby farm. However, after looking at this a little closer, my, as a staff recommendation, I wouldn't think it's important to include that hobby farm as a definition. But I think it's an important part of the discussion. The agricultural use, obviously, we're talking about agriculture. I think it's just to read that, make sure that that definition is adequate. And if it is, we can move on. And the last thing was, we have references to a historical feedlot use in our ordinance. Is there a need to create a definition of a historical feedlot use? And we have an example definition attached there. And then with that amend in, the amendments to section nine eleven, we have to go up to section six oh four A, which is the accessory use section. There's the use tables that look like this. This is, has all the changes already accepted. So let me pop up the other version here, here. And I know we have people on Zoom, so I'm going to have to switch that also here. Okay, so hopefully everybody on Zoom can, can see that now. This has the changes tracked, so you can see what was crossed out and re-entered in there. Some of it's just corrections to things like this removal of section and change it to article, so it references the correct thing. We included the R as an option in that use table. It previously had an A there for an allowed use, which it is. But being that we adopted section, our rule seventy twenty into the ordinance, it's an allowed use, but you are required to register your feedlot. So we put that R there just as a point of clarification. Here's the changes to the use table we had proposed, which we can come back to this when you're ready to look at it. We crossed out some of these pieces at the bottom here and made some updates and corrections to them, which we can review them as we go. And that's all that's left to review is just these use tables, the language at the bottom, and then the definitions and the one piece of section nine eleven. And then if we can sort all that out, I think we have an ordinance ready to present to the commissioners. And that's what I had prepared for this portion tonight.
All right. Well, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments? Raise your hand, you'll have three minutes. Yep, you got a sign in paper?
Yep, we got a sign in sheet up there, so make sure you sign in before you speak and speak into the microphone. We ask that you don't shout out from the crowd because we can't pick that up on the recording and people watching live on YouTube or anything. So anything you say from the crowd, make sure it's up here at the podium into the microphone.
All right, Roger, go ahead.
All right, this seven-month deal for expansions, especially on smaller dairy farms, I think that's a very good deal. Because I haven't heard of anybody that can put in any manure pit now for less than a hundred thousand dollars. And at the price of milk and stuff now, if you want to add 20 cows on and you got to get a permit, there is no way you can do it. On our farm, we did about eight, seven to eight months' storage. And with the, we wanted to haul spring and fall because that's the way fields worked out, and it worked just fine. And I think that's a very good thing to have in there. And we want to keep the historical deal in there so that if you've got an established place, the way I understand that, then you're grandfathered in basically, and we want to keep that in there.
All right, thank you.
I had a question.
Can we get through the public comment and then we'll have board discussion? Any other public comment? The other Roger.
I'm the most important Roger.
According to? You told me you didn't have any jokes tonight.
Pardon?
You told me you didn't have any jokes tonight.
I don't, I was telling the truth.
Anyway, Roger Dukowitz, I'm just a silly old farmer from Todd County. I had some comments discussing this whole thing with a, with a couple of commissioners. And their comment was that it got blowed way out of proportion and how did it do that? And I think some of us and some of you probably have thought the same thing. But if you look on the first page of the first publication back in January, all it addresses is setbacks, feedlot numbers. It doesn't say a word about wordsmithing or explaining certain things. And I have nothing against that if it makes your guys' job and Adam's job easier and better. I'm not going to nitpick it. I'm not in favor of pollution. Probably our farm is cleaner than a lot of your city lots. I don't know that, but I would just, you can, some of you people have been out there and I think you'll, you can see that. And hopefully our grandkids. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and hopefully to the commissioners that are wondering, and people are wondering how it got blowed up to where it was. Well, because that's what they wanted in their December meeting. That's what was discussed. It didn't say anything about, about wordsmithing. And I'm not saying that as a derogatory thing. Wordsmithing might be explaining things in a simpler manner and easier, I think, if, if my vocabulary is somewhat correct. But anyway, thank you for your, oh, I didn't sign in. I decided I was going to wait till my three minutes were up. And then he clicked the ink pen the wrong way. So it didn't write. I tell you. But anyway, thanks for your time, thanks for your efforts. I don't envy your jobs. Thank you, have a good night.
All right. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Are we going to have a question session too or just a comment?
Well, you've got a question, comment, you come up and, you have to come up to the podium though.
My name is Callie Greenwald. I live about a half a mile away from this. And I want to know, first of all, I always thought when stuff like this happened that we got a letter in the mail. We were contacted.
What are you referring to?
When we're going against ordinances.
Are you referencing the methane digester application? That's coming up, we're not to that topic yet.
This is something different.
No, no problem.
Okay, sorry.
Any other public comment?
I don't hear so well, I'm Jody Beeball. I don't hear so well, but Callie's question was about approval of this or hearing or what?
Her question was relating to an agenda topic that's coming up yet, we're not to that topic yet.
Okay, so she won't be able to ask it at that time?
Yes, she can, but we're on, we're on something different right now.
Okay, so is this part of it about whether you're going to approve or not approve of the application?
This is for the feedlot ordinance. This is, this, right now, we're working on the, the feedlot ordinance for the, okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Did you raise your hand? Roger.
I just, my question is.
Can you come up and?
Yeah, you gotta come up to the podium.
You don't have to sign your name, just speak into the microphone.
My wife says I talk too loud. But she talks too loud.
But anyway, just to, just to clarify, maybe an explanation. And regardless of what we've done for the last four months or what you've done, when the commission, when this comes in front of the commissioners, they can throw it all out, they can add more, they can still put setbacks in place.
You're correct.
So that, that has always been the concern for the last forty-eight years for us before the ordinance. Because they can, and hopefully, and we have a commissioner here, hopefully, they don't decide all of a sudden that you need, what was it? Twenty-six-hundred-and-forty-foot setback from a public road for a feedlot, which basically would have outlawed all feedlots in Todd County by definition because we have a township road every mile. So hopefully, you can convey that, hopefully Commissioner Denny can, can relay that information for me. Thank you.
Yep. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If not, we're going to close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion. George, go ahead.
Thank you. I had two questions. One was to, is there a scale of the feedlot category of hobby? Like how many units or?
Let me.
If it's adopted as part of it, I wondered what that would mean.
Yeah, so the, the ordinance is based on tiers really. So two things, we, we break down into different animal unit segments here that require different types of, if it's allowed, or different types of permits or registration. The other piece of it, I'm going to have to find it here, is, here is an example. For the existing setbacks that we do have, they're categorized, categorized into tiers, three tiers. The hobby farm was just like a descriptor in our zoning district description, and that's the only place it's in the ordinance.
Okay, so wouldn't describe a number of units at all.
It would not.
No.
So the other question I had was about the historical category. And at what point does that historical category get reviewed? Is it with change of ownership or some relicensing or how would that?
It, it gets reviewed when somebody asks us if they can have a feedlot in Shoreland as an example. And then we look back at aerial imagery or look for some sort of indication that there was a feedlot on that site at a given time in history. And then they can register for up to nine point nine animal units, but not more. And that's where we've struggled is that we don't have a specific definition of, that tells us what do we need to look for to say that it has historical feedlot use. It's kind of been, we look for anything. But this would zero it in and help us to know exactly what to look for to say yes or no. That piece has been missing.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Tim, you've got anything as a commissioner?
Nothing new to add, just the fact that the guy's done a really good job of discussing this and going over it piece by piece. And again, I'm, I'm happy that we're only changing some vocabulary adjustments and nothing more than that. That didn't happen without four months of discussion, though that was all, all that was taken into consideration, so that was good.
All right. Well, I agree with Roger. I, I mean, I've, I've thought about the seven-month deal. And if, if somebody wants to add ten cows, do we really want to make them, make their pit go from seven months to 12 months? I mean, it's, I can see both sides of it, but it's gonna, it's gonna hurt guys who are, want to do small expansions. I mean, if they're going to double their herd, yeah, then they're probably going to have to do it anyway. But I would, I would be in favor of, on any expansion that they have to have it seven months.
So the, the second statement you see up there is what your recommendation would be?
Right.
So the, the second statement you see up there is what your recommendation would be, that they have to, if they have eight month storage right now, their proposed expansion would then make it, they only have six months. Then they're going to have to go to 12 months because any time that, let me scroll up to that language here real quick. Um, this isn't the right version. I'm going to grab one quick so I can look at the right one. The way it's written or proposed now, part one says that all new liquid manure storage areas and capacity modifications to existing ones would require 12 months minimum. So if you fall, if the expansion then brings the site below having seven month storage, it kicks them all the way to 12. The way it's written. So that's where I'm thinking the reverse is what you're trying to get at, is that we want to have that flexibility to allow a dairy site to just be compliant. That's what we want to have. And I think that's what you may be getting at too?
Yep.
Okay, then I think the recommendation with that thought process would be the top one to just keep that language the same. They can work with our feedlot program, just make sure the site's compliant. And if they don't have a lot of manure storage, they're going to have to present a plan of how they're going to manage that to just, to stay in compliance. It doesn't require a minimum storage in that case. But as soon as they open it up and do want to add capacity, it kicks them all the way to 12 months.
Now, I don't know if there's any government funding on any of these feed, or manure pits or whatever. But I know this has been some years ago, so things could have changed, but I talked to one guy that he had gotten some money from the government to put in the manure storage. But they would not go more than seven months.
Yeah, I thought equip was minimum 14.
Yeah, it's like 18 if you're going to government.
That's all it'll go, seven months.
No, they won't, you gotta do 18. They won't do seven. They won't do under a year.
That's, and that's federal equip funding, state cost share, I don't know the policy on. A lot of times they're worked together, but yes, they have a minimum standard.
I remember a guy telling me, and he had to put some small grains in so he could get that off, so he could clean his pit out before his normal time and, and like I say, this has been quite a few years ago, so.
They've got, they've got a pretty high maintenance.
Okay.
Haven't had since 70, 1980.
Things do change, so sometimes for the better.
All right. What do you guys think about the historic feedlot? Think that should be in there? Nobody's got a comment? There doesn't seem to be an objection to it being in there.
Would there still be a limit on the amount?
Yes.
How many have?
Not, not the way it's written in that top part there. It, it's fairly open-ended as to what the capacity requirements would be.
No, for the historic.
Oh, now we're talking historic, sorry. We'll move to another topic. So what was the question again?
He asked if there'd be a limit. In, in Shoreland, there would be a limit on the number-
9.9.
So, yeah, they couldn't.
Yep.
Which, if somebody wants to have a half a dozen horses in this Shoreland, they'd be all right, or-
And this just really puts into a definition what we've kind of done all along is that we look for any sort of indication over the course of history that livestock existed on that site, but also some component of that still has to exist on the site today to show us that livestock had been there. Otherwise, we listen to people say, well, they were here at one point in time, but nothing tells us otherwise. And the whole intention with these legal nonconformities is to phase them out over the course of time, and when we have no, nothing there to tell us that it really was, there was truly livestock there at any time, this definition's going to help to, to capture that.
So if the barn's gone and the fences are all gone, there's no proof that there was-
Right.
I, I want to clarify what I was going to put. If, if there is a nonconforming condition that this gentleman used the, the word grandfathered in. So at what point does that grandfathering cease to exist? Is it with that operator, or is it just a constancy of operation of that kind of business on the property?
Um, if I understand your question correctly, the, the analysis looks at the property, not who the owner is?
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, if historically it's been something, but it is no longer technically compliant.
Sure.
Because the regulations have changed, but we want to continue to support businesses that have been there. Understandable. At what point does that historical bar go away whereby it now would need to meet the new or the current regulations?
It, it goes away as soon as the barn, the silo, some, some, something that it would indicate that livestock were there. If it's eliminated from the site, you've, you've lost that legal nonconforming status. So as long as that's maintained, there's potential that you could have livestock on that site at some point in time.
So you could end up with a highly noncompliant situation relative to current regulations. But because it had always been there, it can continue to be there?
Right, but we got to be careful with terms here. Nonconforming is one thing, noncompliant, that should never exist. So even, even if they have that nonconforming status, they're legally established, we've registered from them for 9.9 animal units, they still have to remain compliant with Minnesota 7020 and those other sections of the ordinance, so they have to, they can't have any discharge issues or anything like that. They still need to be environmentally compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Got it. Any other comments? Well, I think we should put the historic definition in there also.
And then any concerns with the section 604? This was relatively straightforward. Let me switch back to the other version. Reshare this. Here we go. And any of these changes? This was really just modifying it to match what we've already done in section 911.
What does the R P stand for, Adam? I'm a court short, sorry.
Sure. So the, the P is crossed out. It used to be a P, now that's crossed out. The Rs just means that you need to register your feedlot.
Okay, fine, thank you.
So that's really the only changes you made on there and then the one under the RT?
This here?
Yeah.
Yep, that was changed because in section 911, part in the, in the newest version, part N, it always, it used to allow properties in Shoreland and R2 that are at least one acre to have up to 25 chickens or 20 rabbits. The thought here is arguably Shoreland is the most sensitive areas. Why are we then not allowing chickens to people that live in rural townsite scenarios as long as they still have an acre? So we just added that in there so they can have some chickens, so then that is reflected in the use tables.
All right. Okay, let's go back to the storage one, so we make sure everybody is in agreement on that.
So really-
So we're-
Go ahead.
It's on page 11. Okay, so we're going with the first one, correct? Or that's what-
That's the impression I'm getting here.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
I can help to formulate this motion if you would like me to, but I don't want to rush anybody.
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows what they're actually in the hobby farm definition. That was something you added, correct?
Yep.
So
as far as the storage one, I think the first option there should cover everything we need covered.
Right.
I would certainly opt for that one myself.
Okay, anybody else got any other questions? Are we ready to make a motion on recommending sending this to the commissioners?
What did we, what did we say in the hobby farm? Were we going to include that definition?
Yes, I would include it. I guess that's just me, it's-
I would, since the hobby farm term is used elsewhere in ordinances, we need to have a some kind of definition.
Right.
So that was the hobby farm part?
Yeah.
Okay. Those, those were three different definitions?
Right.
I personally didn't like any of them. Because the hobby farm, most of all, that refers to like, it's like a financial basis, right? It's like a secondary income to the farm. And for us to go out there, you almost have to request some sort of documentation proving that you're hobby farm, and I don't think that's anything that we want to get involved with.
No.
So the best definition that I found, I think, was number two talks about more uses. How it's like a secondary use on the property, so if you want to add a hobby farm definition, number two would be my recommendation. But hobby, that little piece of hobby farm in that zoning district description has never once been an issue. So I don't know that it's completely necessary for it to include it, but I wanted to have the conversation about it.
I don't know that number two would actually necessarily be a good one either, because that could be the main use of that property, but that wouldn't be their main income, so.
Well, it does say, does not change the character or use of the main use. Use of the main use is-
Well, a, a 20 acre hobby farm, the main use of the farm would be a hobby farm, I mean.
But it says clearly secondary to the main use, so then it would not categor, it would not qualify as that if it became larger than the primary use. That's what that suggests, but there's too many words in here.
It's, it's pretty busy.
Number one sounds good to me.
I'd really like to stay away from anything income derived, so we don't have to request those sort of documents. I don't think that's anything the county wants to get into. Yep.
Yeah. You don't want to be asking people that come in if-
Right. So just from a staff perspective, I, I-
Well, I, I guess if the staff don't really think we need it in there, maybe we should leave it out. Because they're the ones that are going to be dealing with it more than.
Well, what about number three? I mean, number three, I think it's a good idea to have a definition, but I think number three is the least intrusive, but also creates a true meaning. And I think it would be valuable for staff to, if they had to respond to something or respond to a complaint by somebody else or something. It's rural. It's principally residential. It's secondary, so it's non-commercial. It's small scale. And opens up all those kinds of possibilities, but gives it a definition. I, I like that.
Well, it would be, I think it would be better than having nothing. I think we do have to have a definition. Since we use that term.
Okay.
Even though we haven't had any challenges to it, doesn't mean we won't. I'd go along with three.
You guys are thinking number three.
I would just get rid of, though I would go with principal residential land use and secondary non-commercial farming. Get rid of or small commercial. So it's defining it as a non-commercial operation. It's principally residential, but it allows people to do something, so it's, it's a hobby farm, it's something where you take care of yourselves, your neighbors, or you give away eggs or whatever. I, I like that definition, but I wouldn't say or small-scale commercial, because what's that?
We could just take this commercial out and have small-scale farming.
Well, we're second, non-commercial defines something.
Yeah, non-commercial means it's not primary income.
Right, well, it's, it's not income-producing, it's not designed.
It's not the airport income.
I think it should say non-commercial farming. But then it opens up for all those, we should say mushrooms in there too.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chair, can I offer a suggestion to the board? Eliminate in that section three, uh, the last description of agriculture, under, under state law, federal law, whatever. Agriculture includes all of those activities, whether, whether you're selling Christmas trees, raising chickens, raising fish, or whatever. So basically, you could eliminate most of that, uh, second, um-
Third line.
Sentence.
Right.
Number three.
Would be secondary non-commercial farming conducted on the property.
That's what I said, secondary non-commercial small-scale farming, and end it right there.
Right, and forget the rest of it.
Take out the commercial between small scale and farming.
And the description, the agriculture, it don't need to be there because under definition, that's all under agriculture.
Right.
Okay, you got to help me revise this here. How do you want to read it?
Take out the commercial between the small scale and farming.
Uh, I think I went back too far. Okay, take out small scale?
No, take out the commercial.
The non-commercial?
No, right there, the commercial, right where you were.
Right here, there we go.
Take out that commercial. Leave the small-scale farming.
What the heck?
Everything after that, take out. Yes, everything from livestock.
I got it, I got it, Roger.
Okay, well, he's kind of, looks like he's bouncing around.
On my, yeah, my computer is not cooperating. There we go.
Oh, I had one of those too.
Now, take out everything from livestock.
Here?
To the end.
There you go.
Like that.
Pretty simple. And explanatory.
I think I've covered everything.
I'm comfortable with that.
I mean, it's pretty easy.
Yeah. Okay.
Let's do that.
God, eliminate a whole bunch of words.
Well, that we got that rewrote. We're going with the def, the third definition for hobby farming. Is that what everybody's?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Are we ready to try to vote on this?
Yes.
Maybe we should go through it, Adam.
Yeah. Yeah, did you want me to walk through what I believe your motion is going to be? Okay, so your motion would be to. Adopt section nine eleven as presented here, but with, um, excuse me, it's not part P, it's actually part. M, performance standards would be that top definition, or that top language. So as presented with that being part M. Section two. Adopt a hobby farm definition stating means rural parcels, parcel or parcel. With the principal residential land use and secondary non-commercial or small-scale farming. Adopt the definition of historic feedlot use, which states a parcel of land within shorelands owning where livestock animals had once been present. And that existing structures on the site indicate the presence of livestock animals. And then to adopt section six oh four A as presented here.
Okay, that's. Everybody understands? If so, do somebody want?
So moved.
We got a motion by George to. Forward this on to the commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Lloyd.
Roll call. Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Motion carried. It'll be to the commissioners at their next meeting, correct?
And because we're a week late, that's not, oh, that'll be all the way on.
May seventh.
Yep, May seventh. And then for those that are interested in kind of seeing a finished product, I'll try to get this wrapped up. And I'll post it to our website in that same spot as version number three or final version or something, so if you want to grab it. Or. Call us and we'll get you a copy via email or something. But I gotta finish piecing it together first, so I will have that soon.
All right, next agenda item is proposed language amendments to Todd County ordinance. Variances, conditional use permits, and zoning amendments.
You want to give people a second if they want to sneak out? All right, just two, all right. Um, so back to March fifth at a commissioners meeting, this concept of, uh. Getting input from our townships as a requirement of our applications was presented. Uh, then on March nineteenth, we discussed it further at a work session and got to go ahead to. Um, be here tonight and look at adopting this, we actually drafted some language to look at in that work session. Um, so. It, what we're proposing is to include that requirement as part of the application process that the applicant. Before they could submit their application to the county, would first have to visit with their local township to present. Their idea, concept, whatever they're up to, so that the township is aware of it early in the process, even before it starts. The issue we are having is that township meetings are every week of the month, but we only have one planning commission meeting. We just simply can't get input from every township in the, in the timely order we need to. So some townships were just simply missing out on the opportunity to comment on things, um, based on when their meetings were. So in an effort to further mitigate that, we want to make it the, the applicant's burden to do that. Um, so what we've included is just that language such as right here, that they need to. Um, present their application to the township at a regularly scheduled meeting. Um, and also that we want some sort of feedback in writing. Uh, from the townships before the commissioners would make their final decision on any certain application. The goal being that we would have it even before the planning commission meeting. Um, but that's the whole intention here, so we're going to include that as proposed here. Sections five point zero three variances, section five oh five conditional use permits. And then section five oh six zoning amendments, that's where that rezoning piece falls under. Um, and just one additional note, that when it refers to governing body, that is the county board of commissioners. So as the process would be proposed right now, we would amend our applications on all of those things. To have some sort of note of the date you visited the township during their meeting. We would be able to verify that by contacting the township or getting a copy of the minutes, whatever. Um, so the landowner would propose something, they present that idea, um, to the local township. Prior to submitting the application to the county, we receive that application, prepare for the public hearing. And in that timeframe, the township would weigh in or provide some sort of statement of no concern, just to get something back from them. Could be the letter, email, or something, or of course, attend the meeting here in person. And then the commissioners would, would not make their decision unless we have that written correspondence from the township. Uh, the very little bit of, I don't know if any township folks are here tonight, hopefully they'll stand up and speak to this, um, if they are here. The little bit of feedback that we have received on this so far has been split fifty fifty. Um, some think this is great, it's gonna, uh, give them the opportunity and every single application to at least view it. Um, and then they would, if they have no concerns, they'll share that with us. Others have felt like we're just placing additional burden on the township in the decision-making process that belongs to the county. That's what I have to share here tonight, and this is the proposed language, which if we're comfortable with it, we can adopt tonight. Um, but that's what I have to share.
All right, this time we will open it up for public comment.
Okay, the tornado alarm's gonna, or siren's gonna go off here in a second, so. Do we want to just wait until after that for public comment, or want to just go for it?
We'll get started, and if it goes off, we'll just, unless it's Roger, he can keep talking.
Talking about him?
No, the second Roger.
I can hear what you said.
Any other, any public comment?
Well.
Hey, Roger, come up here.
I had to sign in.
I, I attend my township meetings quite regularly. And I, I guess the problem forever with these amendments is by the time the town board gets notification. And their meeting isn't for three weeks, you know, after they get the notification. Your time lapse with these applications expires. So they don't really have time, and, and just for what our township is considering. Getting a text message system. To where those people that care, when the chairman and, and the clerk get notification of these things. That they can text the public, whoever signed up, to be notified of it. And I don't know if what you're trying to do would be correct. The timeframe between the time of the application with the, by the time you get it to the town board. And by the time the county has to act or, or act on it, is not enough. That, that's my opinion, but I don't know if, if this is the correct answer. Because. If, if all of a sudden my wife decides she's going to build an outdoor toilet. I come down here, I have to go to the town board meeting, which ain't for another three and a half weeks. To apply for a permit and then come down here. You know, and apply, and by the time we come here, she's got to go to the bathroom. That's my comment, so I don't, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think you're kind of addressing it from the wrong end of the horse, maybe. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Uh, Wally's Astro, Long Prairie Township. Um, what you're asking is an applicant, before he applies for you, comes to us as a town board. And brings his proposal to us to give a yea or nay in the township before he comes to you. That's what you're asking?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, that's a great question, and I should have said that before. The whole intention of this is not to get township approval on anything, it's to get township input. Into concerns, addressing things that may be important to your neighborhood, your township roads, anything like that. None of the burden of decision-making weighs on the township.
Okay, so when he comes and applies for something to you. You're going to send him to us, does his timeline start then?
No, the talent, the timeline for decision starts when he submits his application to the county. But we're not going to accept that application unless he's been to the town board.
Okay, and then he's going to come to the town board and say, I want to put in an outhouse. No, we haven't started a timeline yet. Then the town board says. We don't care if you put it in or not, we can't make a judgment and say, you're putting it in the lowland. Or you're putting it on top of the hill. Until we know more information on what the rules are, if we don't know what those zoning rules are. We have an opinion that says it can't go in the swamp, it can't go here, or it can't go there. Then we just say, we don't care if he puts it in or not, or no, we don't want it, and then that gets referred to you.
Right.
So we're making no decision on the application or anything like that, we're just aware that somebody's going to put an outhouse in our township.
Right, this outhouse example is interesting, but.
I mean.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, you just want us to be aware that something's going to happen in our township.
Yes, and if you have concerns that you feel like this board and the commissioners need to know. That can be implemented as a condition of the approval of a conditional use permit. We can get that as part of it to help with the concerns of the township.
I, I think probably that's a good idea, uh, example, we've had things happen in Long Prairie Township. We as a board knew nothing about until we get backwash on it. But will that change? I don't think you're going to gain anything, maybe. You might, you might tell, tell somebody that before you apply for this, let your neighbors know what you're thinking. That's, that's more what it's about. Just get the information out that you're going to do something, let your neighbors know so that they aren't hit over the head. When you start digging the hole for your outhouse with a backhoe. So, okay.
Uh, just before you sit on, I think this is more along the lines of. Want to putting a business in your township that's going to have a lot of traffic in the springtime on your roads.
Correct, correct, but still.
Know about that.
Still, it's notification that you want to do something progressive in the township, let the town board know. And say, yeah, we're going to try something.
So then if you have.
Get some feeling.
Yeah, if you have a concern with that, you come to the meeting, let us know that, that we can't take that much traffic on that road.
Correct, correct, and it's, it's the same thing that we've tried to get out. If you got a concern with the township road, I just got notified on Friday. That we had a road that got missed, snow plowing in the last snow, and the neighbors had to plow it. And I said, well, why didn't you call one of the board members and say, my road wasn't plowed? This is the same thing. Let, let the township know what's going on, get information to the township. Okay.
Any other public comment?
Barb there. I have not been keeping time, I'll start. I haven't been keeping time, but I'll start.
I'm Barb James, um, isn't there already something where if you're going. To file for a permit like this, that you are supposed to notice, notify your township board?
Yes, um, but the issue with it is, is that the timing of when our notices go out. Don't, it's impossible for it to work for every single township across the county. So we get in situations where they get the notice. One, like maybe the day of their meeting or something, or they just don't have time to even have a meeting before we have this meeting here tonight. So we don't even have an opportunity to comment on an application. The only possible way to mitigate for that is just require the applicant to notify the township before they even submit it to the county.
Okay, the reason why I bring this up is because Deja had me notify before I got the building permit for our barn. So she told me that I needed to contact.
I'd have to ask Deja the reason for that specific one, because land use, I, maybe it was a different permit. Um, was it the feedlot permit? Because those are required to be noticed to the township. Uh, but your land use permit for the structure itself, that, that doesn't require any notification, that's an administrative permit.
Okay.
It maybe was a, the type of permit that required it, and I'm assuming because Deja's involvement, that it was feedlot program related.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment and open it up for board discussion.
Well, I think it's a good idea, you know, try and make it work the best you can. It's kind of nice if you, uh, know what's going on before you get your butt chewed out that something you didn't know, so. Yeah, it's, uh, occasionally that does happen, something's going on and, and township doesn't know anything about it. If it ain't a next door neighbor or something. You may not know it, and then somebody comes in and starts complaining, it'd be nice to know ahead of time what, what is what.
Excuse me, but if it's your next door neighbor, you would have gotten the notice. When that, that the county sends out.
Right.
For the application, so I'm a little bit concerned that this creates, uh, some busy work for bodies that are. Can have an opinion but no, no authority. So.
Right, that's.
The more localized politics get, the more personal it becomes, and you know, it's, this is. The decisions happen in another level where people are responsible for being informed about the criteria, be it. An outhouse in a lowland or wherever, whereas you're putting stuff in front of people, I mean, what are we asking for? Input or approval, or it's just, just to be informed?
Yeah, the goal is to inform the townships and hopefully in return, we get some sort of feedback from the township of what their concerns of whatever that particular land use is. But no decision-making, decision-making authority on any of these items lies with the township, it's strictly input.
Could we accomplish this just by asking the applicant to have. Part of the application is also giving copies of their application to the chair of the township board. Something that puts it out there, but doesn't, it doesn't need discussion, it's just to make people aware.
Um. I'd have to think about that. We could do any number of things, the, the commissioners, and Tim, you might help to help me out here with this. The, the main concern with the commissioners is that they weren't getting any sort of feedback from the townships. And, and, and that's what the.
You can't force the township to.
Yes.
The problem we were getting was that we were having townships show up to our meetings and saying that. We were never informed of this, and if we were, we would have put some conditions on there that would have protected a road or a business or a street or better signage or, or whatnot. Um, and again, like Adam made a comment about, about the time of the meetings, so like, some of these, if, if, um. You know, if we were to send out the notice, they may, they may, went to the, to that township the day after their meeting. And all of a sudden it's coming here within the next week, and then we're voting on it, and a week later, and township had no idea that was happening. Um, it, it, it's happened before, um, on some planning stuff, or on some, uh, rezoning too. And I don't know how many of our last applicants, we had conditions because we took the considerations of the township. Um, last month in particular too, we had a, um, a business that went into Ken's Point, a business that was going in. And township was here, spoke on that business, or on township behalf, and we re, made a condition to reroute the traffic. And also have the proper signage put up along with, um, a larger approach to accommodate that business along with not beating that township road to death. So that was, again, we're trying to mitigate all the problems and keep everybody as informed and educated as possible with, without the township. We're not looking for someone to go to the township and, um, get battered around by them and tell them, you're not doing this, not doing this, this is. Come in the township, let you know, I'm proposing to build a house, or I'm proposing to do this, I just. That's all you guys have to, it's just got, it's not really even discussion, it's, it's an informative, you know, um, statement. And then the township is to respond to the county saying, applicant came through, we have a concern for this road, we have a concern for this, or, or et cetera. It's, it's not meant to be, um, as in-depth discussion as, as this is, or as, at a board level. It's more or less to get the concerns of what the township has for the county, to, to take that into consideration.
So I agree with all that, I just don't know what commentary on the application shall be provided to the county. Prior to the final decision of the governing body, so that's a, that's. A responsibility of the township to, to provide that commentary.
It's as simple as, you know, in an email, an applicant, whatever, one hundred and four, no comment. It's as simple as, as. It's as simple as, as, as one email, it's, it's, or, or it's as, it's as in-depth as an essay of what you want done. I mean, it's, it, um, we don't need to, I get what you're saying.
I, I agree, I've just known there's people on my township board who don't even use email.
Right, or some, which I understand that, okay, well, let's write a letter then.
An onus on the township board, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Cause we can't, because other applicant could say, oh yeah, I went there.
Yeah.
But staff is gonna need evidence that they went there.
Right.
So this creates an onus on the township to say, yes, we are aware of that.
Right.
So is that gonna work for all the townships?
We, we believe it would work better than what we currently are doing right now, and right now, we're, it seems like we're, we're missing. A lot of, of information from townships.
I, I agree, I've just, have we, are all those townships willing to take on that responsibility of responding to you?
I would, I agree with George, I, a lot of them will, but there are some who probably won't. And I got a question on this number five under the proposed process, it says commissioners will not be able to make a decision without written correspondence from the township. Or input at the public hearing.
That, that sounds.
If the township don't send nothing or don't come to the public hearing, how can that hold up the process?
That's one of my fears as a staff, that we're gonna be chasing downtown ships begging for comments that. They don't have any concerns, so they just don't say anything.
I mean, you don't, we send stuff to the DNR, we don't tell them you have to comment, or we're not gonna, I mean, if, if. If they don't have an issue, they don't respond to you, they don't waste their time on it.
So hearing the conversation here, I think the recommendation is to add it in that the applicant should go to the township. Well, we have it on our planning applications already, we just know you were at the township board on this day. And the township chair just has the opportunity to sign and say, yep, they were here, then we know at least they were there. And if we receive nothing from the township, well, that's on the township for not responding, if they have concerns, they should tell us. So it would be removing this last sentence in each of these sections, just saying the applicant needs to go to township, and that's that.
I think what you just described would be the best way to do that.
Right.
Give them a sign off sheet and let them sign that off, that's a small ask.
There's a new checkbox on the application where there's a signature of your local township board chair or somebody on it. That accompanies the application.
And just keep it that simple.
I don't even know if, what if they refuse to sign it?
Well, you can write that in there, if they refuse to sign it, bring it back.
Our, our planning application says, you know, write the date you attended the township meeting, and then it says optional township signature. So that, because we didn't want, in that case, we didn't want the township to feel like they were signing it agreeing with what was happening. The intention was that you're signing saying, okay, they were here. But if they didn't feel comfortable with that, at least we would be able to go to the township and get a copy of the minutes, it would still verify, it would meet the goal of what we're trying to do.
That would be a better way, I think.
Okay, we'll, we'll mimic that.
Yes, I told it.
Yep, okay, so I just deleted that last sentence out of each example, so each of the three sections still amended, but as presented on the screen there now.
Date of the, date of the township meeting that you attended. Cause if you're in doubt of it, or some, there's some blowback, there's a way to go back and check.
Yep, so. So then they won't actually be presenting it to the township prior to their application, correct?
No, they would be.
Okay.
Not presenting their application, just saying, here's what I'm thinking.
Right.
Yes, and they would ha, hopefully have a copy of our application at that time. To put a date, and if the township chair is willing to sign it saying, yep, he was here on that date, I'm verifying that, it's on the application. But it will still say optional, so that the township doesn't feel like they're backed into a corner signing and saying, we agree with this.
Right.
But we can verify that in other methods.
Right.
Like get a lot more people going to their township meetings.
Which is not a bad thing.
Yeah, no, that's good, Roger, go ahead.
I just have a question for the board, how many people actually know their town board members? And how many people know when the meeting is? And how are they going to other you and Roger? You, you, I'm, see what I'm getting at?
Well, I.
Well, I don't disagree, but most people have no clue, other than election day. That the town board exists.
And that's where we come in to help them.
Right, well, they're gonna have to, I guess they're gonna have to learn, and here's, here's a good excuse for them to learn.
Yeah, and it's a good idea to learn.
I, I hope you teach them, I've been trying for years.
I, I'm good at that either, but I mean.
All right, it's on them to figure that out, that's not a big ask. And it's easy enough to find out for them, they can do that. You remove the last sentence in each.
Yep, in each of those three.
Generally speaking, if they don't get the roads graded, or they don't get the snowplowed, they sure as heck figure out who the town board is.
You have a complaint.
They know I'm in. They don't find you to come and thank you, Roger. All right. Everybody. Understands what we'd be recommending to the county board? What about this, well, is this proposed process gonna be?
That's just informational, yep.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted.
I think with those changes, I would move to approve that and send it to the commissioners.
We got a motion to recommend. The proposed revisions and forwarding it on to the commissioners.
Second that.
Motion by Lloyd's, or Ken, second by Roger.
We'll call Ken.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lloyd. George.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Motion carried, it'll be at the commissioners. May seventh. Next agenda item, North Star RNG LLC. Somebody present?
You can come up.
You can have a seat at the table up here.
Hey, good evening, I'm Mark Hill, I am co-CEO of Novia RNG, which is the parent company of North Star RNG LLC.
All right, and this is a request for construction and operation of an anaerobic digester. To renewable natural gas project in AF1, and we will have the staff report.
All right, Ida, agenda item number three, again, our applicant is North Star RNG LLC. Application is involved on five parcels, eighteen zero zero three two six zero zero, eighteen zero zero three three zero zero zero, eighteen zero zero four zero eight zero zero. Eighteen zero zero four zero seven zero zero, and eighteen zero zero three two three zero zero. The site address where this is proposed to be located is two one six nine five state two eighty seven, and it's located in AF1 zoning. And as Jim stated, it's the request for construction and operation of an anaerobic digester to renewable natural gas in AF1 zoning. Here is the site location, the black outline, if it comes through better here, is, uh. Is all those parcels identified in that black, uh, outline there. Just zoomed in a little bit more to it here to show the site location. The Dairy Ridge site down here, um, at the bottom is where the digester is proposed to be located. I'll flip to the next one here, but please recognize that it's rotated, so north, north is to the top here. When I go to the site image, north is gonna be to the left side of this image, so the Dairy Ridge site is, is here. And the, the digester is actually proposed to be located right, if you can, can you see my mouse on the screen? No, you cannot, dang it, all right, I'm gonna go up there.
He's got a pointer.
Oh, yeah, it's back there, but right here is where it's proposed to be located on the Dairy Ridge site. And I might grab that laser pointer quick. Okay, continuing on here, again, that's the location of it. This, again, the blackout line is all the parcels that are involved in the application, that kind of light green colors indicating that, that's the zoning district, which is AF1. Agriculture, Forestry one. This is all the soils information of that area, if there's any specific soil types we need to dig into, I can do that, there's just so many across that area, I couldn't include them here. This is identifying the, uh, wetlands in that area. And a few site images here, this is looking southeast at the proposed location. Here looking southwest. This one, uh, looking more west, southwest at the proposed location, so this whole area is gonna look a whole lot different, uh, if the digester is built there. And then just one additional southwest view here. All right. Number one, is the use in conformance with the purposes of the comprehensive plan? Economic Development Guiding Principle number one states to educate and inform the public that agricultural businesses have the same, if not greater potential than other businesses. Economic Development Guiding Principle number four says to promote, protect, and support existing business and agriculture. Natural Resource Guiding Principle number five, to protect the air quality in the county to comply with Minnesota pollution control standards. Uh, not, not a, uh, guiding principle from the comp plan, but a statement I found in there. It does reference methane, uh, or anaerobic digesters in the comp plan. Uh, in the utilities, energy, and communications section, there's an animal waste portion that has these statements. Methane production is, is practical at individual farm level with anaerobic digester. An industrial scaled collection system is expensive because of water weight, high moisture content. Uh, of animal waste is a problem for combustion and must be supplemented with drier feedstocks like wood chips. Lowest total BTUs from renew, are from renewable energy sources. And turkey, local turkey litter burner in Benson, Minnesota, there's been a large increase in turkey operations in the past decade. So these are statements that are currently in our comprehensive plan, just wanted to note that this comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand nine. Two, that the establishment of the conditional use to not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding properties. Uh, this proposal will not impede the ability of neighboring properties to further develop or improve their individual properties. Three, the applicant, in the opinion of the planning commission, has demonstrated a need for the proposed use and is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. The applicant identif, has identified that milk consumers are looking for lower carbon emissions from dairies. Additionally, this proposal supports efforts to move towards renewable energy forms. Four, use will not create an excessive burden on infrastructure, including parks, schools, streets. And other public facilities and utilities which serve, are, are proposed to serve the area. Uh, there are no parks, schools, or other public facilities or utilities in the area other than the public roadway. The road, um, to access the site is a state highway that is constructed and intended for heavy use. Five, use will not create a pollution hazard or other detrimental environmental effects both during and after construction. Effects to be considered shall include but not limited to soil erosion and sedimentation. Pollution or other degradation of surface waters and groundwater supplies, impact on water supply, and adequacy of sewage treatment. Uh, the septic system on the site have all been verified as compliant. Uh, use of groundwater has not been identified, but should be considered as part of the application. Uh, there are no surface waters in the immediate vicinity of the construction site, but, uh, erosion and sediment control should be implemented during the construction phase. Six, adequate measures have been or will be taken to sufficiently minimize traffic congestion. And provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Traffic congestion is of minimal concern for this proposal, as the site is located along a state highway, adequate areas available for off-street parking and loading space. There is an anticipated increase of traffic, uh, with trucks hauling to the site. Seven, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, glare, appearance, and vibrations, so that none of these will constitute a public nuisance. Uh, digestion of manure produces a number of odorless gases and compounds. Uh, this proposal is designed to reduce offensive odors or fumes with, uh, the production taking place in a sealed environment. The appearance is proposed to blend into an agricultural setting, and other concerns are minimal and are also common in an agricultural setting. Eight, the intensity of the proposed use is not inconsistent with the purposes of the ordinance. And the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Uh, animal feedlots of five hundred animal units or greater, or manure storage with a capacity of five hundred animal units or greater require a conditional use permit in AF1 zoning. Uh, uses of the same general character also would require a conditional use permit. Just some additional questions I wanted to note here, so hopefully we can get some information, um, through the process tonight is. Is, what is the water usage of the digester annually? What happens to the pipe within the public right of way if this is ever abandoned? Uh, what additional feedlot sites are, or will additional feedlot sites be contributing manure to the digester, and if so, how much? And who will the gas be sold to? How many gallons of waste can be produced in the digester? How much manure storage is contained within that digester alone, and then, um, what are the hours of operation? The recommendation, um, again, considering addressing all the concerns. Is a motion to recommend approval to the county commissioners with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall obtain all necessary permitting from other governmental agencies prior to issuance of land use permits. Including but not limited to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Two, the applicant must abide by construction stormwater requirements identified in Minnesota Rule seventy ninety. Three, proposed facility shall be constructed and installed in, in accordance with engineered plans. Or the applicant shall host a meeting onsite with local public safety personnel, personnel. To review the emergency response plan prior to issuance of land use permits. Five, proposed digester is restricted to the digestion of manure, conversion to other feedstocks shall require the review of the planning commission. Six, applicant shall abide by all their applicable federal, state, and local standards. Seven, failure to meet any of the identified conditions above may result in, uh, revocation of the permit. Following procedures established by enlisted in the Todd County Planning and Zoning Ordinance. And eight, that upon abandonment of one year, termination or non-renewal of any permit or certificate necessary to operate the facility. Or failure to operate the facility in a manner consistent with this ordinance, or with the state or federally, federal regulation. Landowner and the owner and operator shall remain responsible for all costs of closure, cleanup, and other costs. Necessary to bring the property into compliance with all federal, state, and county regulations and to restore the site. Pro, or restore the property to, to a suitable use. That's my staff report, Mr. Chair.
Any correspondence?
We have none on this one.
All right, at this time, applicant, you have a presentation you would like?
I do.
All right.
Uh, let me switch it so it shows up on the screen here. There it is, so you just tell me when you need me to slide.
All right, so, uh, this is the North Star RNG LLC CUP application narrative. Uh, this is the project going to Dairy Ridge Dairy, the next slide please.
Oh boy.
Swear there's a slide there.
Let me try to reload it or something here.
I have a copy on PowerPoint if you need it.
Okay.
USB stick.
Let me try again here. Thank you. I'm gonna try to reload it from here first. Okay.
Here's your.
Yeah. Um, okay. Here we are.
So what is renewable natural gas? Uh, renewable natural gas is natural gas, it's just instead of coming out of the ground. And, uh, coming from North Dakota or something and being put into Minnesota. This, uh, gas comes from a renewable source, you see, it comes, could come from food waste, it could come from landfills. In this case, it is coming from dairy manure. Um, the manure is being digested in a digester like you see there. Um, and then it gets processed into pipeline quality natural gas and injected into a nearby pipeline. So in terms of the molecules, natural gas is methane, one carbon atom, four hydrogen atoms. It's the exact same stuff that you already consume in your, uh, homes. Uh, that's used to power power stations, is used to power boilers. It's, it's identical. Uh, this project will support two full-time jobs and dozens of construction jobs during construction. Uh, each one of our projects, there is a facility manager and a facility technician on. Uh, decreased odor from farm lagoons and decreased methane emissions in the atmosphere. The whole point of this project beyond just creating natural gas, uh, and creating, uh, locally sourced natural gas. Is that on a typical animal feedlot that has a lagoon. That manure is stored for many months before it is placed into the fields to be used as fertilizer. Here, uh, during that time, um, especially during the summer months. That manure warms up and goes through anaerobic respiration. Uh, it's the breakdown and digestion of all the volatile solids, the energy that's still left in the manure. Uh, in the absence of oxygen, when that happens, methane is released into the atmosphere. Uh, as well as things like hydrogen sulfide, um. As well as things like hydrogen sulfide and other odors. Methane, many regulatory bodies consider to be 28 times the greenhouse gas pollutant that carbon dioxide is. And so there's a lot of incentive, rather than let this methane go up in the atmosphere, to digest it before it gets, the manure gets to the lagoons and use that gas for beneficial purpose. And that is what's happening here. And some of the benefits of that is instead of those gases being released out of the lagoon, the hydrogen sulfide, the methane, things that cause smells and cause global warming, that these, these gases are being captured first. This is gonna be locally produced energy equivalent to about 800,000 gallons a year of gasoline. Now, we're not making gasoline, we're making natural gas. But just to give you an idea of just the energy content of this. And it's gonna be available for a variety of uses, from vehicle fuel to energy for industry. At this time, we have not sold this gas. Matter of fact, I have two projects, one in Wisconsin, one in Iowa, that will be starting up. We have two in operations already, but we have two in our construction that'll be starting up this summer, which we also have not sold the gas yet. We wait till a few months prior and find the best available market for it. For this gas, there's a variety of uses for it. CenterPoint Energy has issued an RFP that we're gonna be participating in to sell the gas and the renewable attributes to them. There's a large market in California to be used for vehicle fuel transportation. Canada wants this gas for their own environmental initiatives. We even get places like Japan or Europe looking for this gas. So it's a wide market out there and, but the reality is the molecules themselves will be consumed here locally. That one carbon atom, four hydrogen atoms, methane. Next slide, please. So we've got, we are a nationwide dairy renewable natural gas developer with experience here in Minnesota and nearby states. So in addition to this, we have two other projects we're developing right now in Minnesota. One of them is probably about six months ahead in the permitting compared to this. We have a project in Morris, Iowa, just near the border there. You can see that will be coming online this July. And we have two projects in operations right now, one in Berlin, Wisconsin, and one in Saranac, Michigan. We have our own internal construction engineering team, and we're currently at 35 employees. So we're not a big company by any means, but we have a lot of highly talented individuals. Next slide. Speaking of some of those, not me, but some of the highly talented individuals. So my business partner and I have over a decade of experience doing this. We've ran 21 landfill gas to energy projects and eight dairy RNG projects for a previous employer. And then in this role right now, we have two operational and two in our construction. And then several more we're starting up construction on this year. Our team, we brought over cherry picked throughout the industry, our CFO or Director of Commissioning. Then our Vice President of Operations has over 20 years' experience in natural gas processing. Next slide. So how, there we go. So how it works, think of our digesters as a pit stop. That is all that's happening. The manure gets collected from the barns, and instead of going straight to the lagoons, it's gonna make, at this project, probably a 23, 24-day pit stop in a two-and-a-half-million-gallon anaerobic digester. In that digester, we stir the manure, and we heat it up to 101 degrees Fahrenheit, which also happens to be the typical body temperature of a cow. When we do that, a gas comes out of there, it's a biogas, it's 55% methane and 45% carbon dioxide. Well, in order to get into the pipeline, we've gotta get the carbon dioxide below 2%, so we've gotta get the methane up to about 98%. So then we compress that gas into an upgrading plant. That plant is really cool. It uses an electric compressor to boost the gas to about 180 PSI. Tires in your cars are about 35 PSI. That gas goes through a series of membranes. And they're little tiny tubes with little holes on the side of the tubes. They look like bundles of spaghetti. And they act as molecular sorters. And so less dense molecules like methane will go one direction, and denser molecules like hydrogen sulfide, carbon dioxide, and water go another direction. And then we combust the things we don't want, like hydrogen sulfide, in a thermal oxidizer. That thermal oxidizer is a big oven. We have to get it permitted through the state of Minnesota. That application is already in. We've passed the air modeling on it, and just waiting to have that come back to us. Then the gas that we do want, that methane, gets put into the local pipeline. We have two options here. We can go to the CenterPoint Pipeline that feeds Long Prairie. Or we can stay on, we can go over to the Northern Natural Gas Interstate line that cuts across the dairy's property. The dig, what comes out of the digester is called digestate. Okay? And by the way, we're not adding anything to the digester. All we are doing is heating it up and stirring it. That's all that's happening. But what comes out is, right out of a cow's rear end, you're at about 12% total solids. And because we're digesting it, digesting, digesting it, this digestate comes down to about 6% total solids. So it's more liquidy. Then it goes, in this case, through a screw press that removes the fiber to be used for bedding for the cows. Cows really like this because as it's going through our digester, it kills off the pathogens. So you get healthier cows, better milk production from this. The farmer also likes it because the effluent that goes to the lagoon has now had half the solids removed. And then it goes through fiber separation. And so typically going to lagoon at this point, you might be down to 3%, 4% total solids. Very easy to pump, easy to land apply, better pathogen kill when they take it out to the fields. And because it's easier to pump, you can pump longer distances, and you don't have to truck as much manure. In our particular case, we're gonna be taking manure from Dairy Ridge, right there locally, Hollerman, Word Spring, and Timmer. Timmer will actually have its manure pumped over. Hollerman and Word Spring will be trucking over, and we anticipate about four trucks a day to coming in. However, the net result of all this, because it's gonna be easier for the dairy to pump manure, they're expecting to avoid about 10 million gallons worth of hauling off to the fields, and they can pump off to the fields instead. Additionally, because we're destroying those volatile solids, just the total mass goes down by about 6%. So we're expecting this to be ballpark trucking neutral, even though there are four trucks coming in every day. It avoids a lot of the trucking that happens in the fall and spring coming out of here. Next slide, please. So I think a lot of this was covered in the staff report, so we can keep going here. Also covered in the staff report. A little bit closer zoom in on there. You can see the digester that circle off to the right, and then the gas processing to the left of it. And we'll have some pictures of nearly identical projects we've done here a little bit. Next slide, please. And so we got two potential routes. One, again, is to cut across the dairy's property to interconnect it with the Northern Natural Gas Interstate Pipeline. And the other one, which was recently submitted to us, is to connect in with CenterPoint Energy Pipeline to Long Prairie. What's important to note that if we go with the CenterPoint route, which we made very well, we will not own that pipeline, they will bring the pipeline to us. And as a utility, they have the ability to connect. We have to put in a request to connect, and then they bring that down to us. The other nice thing, if it's CenterPoint Energy, if anybody along that route that they're taking to us does, wants to connect and get natural gas instead of propane, they can do that. Next slide. So some of the project's structure details, this is our project in Saranac, Michigan. You can see, I got a nice little shadow there, so I can point. So there's the thermal oxidizer, that's the big oven that we talk about. And then behind it's the digester. The digester is about 78 and a half feet wide. At the sidewalls, it's about 72 feet tall, holds two-and-a-half-million gallons of digest of manure. The minimum, we like to get down to 17 days retention time, so that works out to be about 150,000 gallons a day. This project will not put that much in. Again, I'm anticipating the mid-20s for retention time, so probably closer around 80,000 gallons. Again, everything coming out of the barns will go in this digester and just make a pit stop before it goes into the lagoons. Next slide, please. Yeah, and so this anaerobic digester tank is German. Schumann Tanks makes it. They ship it over in panels, it's bolted together. As it goes up, it actually looks like a grain bin going up. It's actually kind of like an industrial strength grain bin in some ways, just insulated. There's a mixer on the top and a propeller shaft that goes down the middle with props on it. It just turns, and that's how we stir this. And how we heat it is we take manure out, run it through a heat exchanger that's being heated with a boiler, and then put the manure back in. One of the key things is we really pay a lot of attention to what-ifs. We're gonna be operating dozens of these, well, first of all, dozens of these, hundreds of these digesters already in place. They've been around since the, in Europe, this tank manufacturer since the 1990s. Digesters themselves, quite frankly, have been around since the 1800s. They've become pretty commonplace in wastewater treatment plants, probably since the 1950s. And in terms of food waste and manure, first ones kind of getting put in the 80s and 90s. And at this point, in the, in the United States, there's literally hundreds of these in place. We pay a lot of attention to make sure that we don't have leaks. So we actually leak test these digesters, go around, inspect everything. To date, we have not had leaks. We have not had any environmental violations in any of our projects that are running. These are, they've kind of just standardized these at this point. And we also pay a lot of attention to how we pump manure in and take manure, digestate, back out. And you can see kind of what some of the office buildings look like, containers. Next slide, please. So environmental compliance. The digesters, flares, thermal oxides are required to meet all regulations and have necessary permits before operations. We have to get the air permit we discussed. We have to work with the dairy on their CFO permit to get a digester permit, a digester put on that permit. We have to get stormwater permits, building permits, electrical permits. When you install a boiler, we gotta get a boiler permit. So those are all just the standard boilerplate permits that we end up having to get. Odor and noise levels will meet all local ordinances. Environmental control devices are designed to combust odor-causing compounds. Again, we're not creating more H2S. H2S is hydrogen sulfide that rotten egg spells, already coming out of any dairy lagoon across the country. We're just capturing it elsewhere and then properly combusting it. And the EPA describes the benefits of anaerobic lagoons as what comes out of a digester after processing is much less odorous than the feedstocks that go into the digester. Huge focus on safety, automated e-stops, methane detection devices, fire detection devices, hydrogen sulfide monitoring in closed spaces. All technicians get trained through a safety program we have. We do a plant walkthrough, an annual meeting with the first responders. What's important here is we have two employees. They are not working all 24/7, okay? They work normal shifts, Monday through Friday, and then one of the employees will come and do a walkthrough of the plant on Saturday and Sunday. The plant is heavily automated, meaning that we're constantly monitoring literally hundreds of different points throughout the plant with automated shutdowns in case one of the alarms goes off. There's a call-out then that occurs to the employee, and they come out and fix the problem. Why do we do that? Well, first of all, we, I've, I've managed 34 of these projects like this now. This is how we did all of them. And to be frank, even if you had a person there 24/7, which gets very expensive to do, but even if you had them there 24/7, they're not gonna be standing there waiting to turn a valve for the moment's notice. I mean, this is, these are all controlled by computers at this point. Next slide. Actually, real quick, going back to the other slide and focusing on safety, environmental compliance, and just being good neighbors to everybody. I do have a, two letters from dairies that we're operating on. I'll read one of them here, and you can read the other one, I'm happy to pass this out as well. But this is our Trillium Hill Farms in Berlin, Wisconsin. My name is Mike Jones, it's not mine, but the guy who wrote it. And I'm one of the owners of Trillium Hill Farm in Berlin, Wisconsin. Jared, my co-CEO, and Mark asked me to write a letter about our experience with them installing and operating a digester in RNG facility at our dairy. We chose to work with Jared and Mark at NOVIA because they are well-respected in the dairy RNG industry and have a proven track record of building and operating digesters and gas conditioning equipment. The structures and equipment they have installed in our dairy are very close to our barn and a location where people are often working. Matter of fact, this tomorrow, they are taking 400 kindergartners by our project as part of spring tours of the local school system. The structures and equipment they have installed in our dairy are very close to our barn. We have been very pleased with the project and not noticed any additional odors or noise since it's come online. In fact, we have seen a reduction in odors coming from the manure in our lagoons. We have asked several neighbors, asked us why there is less odor this year when we were applying manure to the fields. We believe that the reduction in odor is because the manure spent several weeks in the digester where much of the odor-causing volatile cells were destroyed and gas is captured. Sending manure through the digester is the only thing that's changed this year compared to previous years. My dad lives right across the street from the dairy and close to where the digester and gas handling equipment installed. He has not noticed any odors or have been unhappy with the appearance of the layout of the facility. The NOVIA team took great care, that equipment and site were designed to minimize any potential for leaks and environmental impacts and the rare case of manure spill. We are very comfortable with their approach, members pressed with what they have seen. It's clear that the NOVIA team has operated dairy RNG space for many years, has proven technology to keep their employees, our employees and animals, neighbors, and environment safe. So people are happy to read this, I can provide contact information. Next slide. So we anticipate breaking ground this fall with the proper permits in place. Probably in the summer of 2025, first fill, fall, first renewable natural gas production, and late next year, state state operations. To the left is our Morris, Wisconsin, Morris, Iowa project that's under construction, it'll be up this summer. And to our right, that was taken a few weeks ago, that is in Unity, Wisconsin, our Buckhorn project. Okay, next slide. Again, two highly skilled full-time jobs, dozens of construction jobs in 2024, 2025, ongoing vendor work for local electricians, local utilities, piping, et cetera. And really what this does is it starts future-proofing the agriculture and economy of Todd County. So by having additional pipelines and stuff that they're running, there's ability for other people to connect into them. But a lot of consumers, the end users of milk, whether it be cheese, milk co-ops, whether it be a large international food company, are paying a lot more attention to the lower carbon emissions from dairies. And whether or not this is your personal politics or not, and everybody has a different view on it, the reality is these $100 billion companies, they have a score sheet. And when they buy milk, they are paying attention to how much carbon greenhouse gas emissions were released in the production of this. And so this helps with these dairies here start meeting what may become more and more mandatory from milk buyers over the next 20 years. Next slide, please.
That's the end?
That's the end. Oh, good. Didn't have to see a smiling picture of me at the end of it, good. Actually, I'm a top there. Any questions from the board?
Anybody got any questions for him?
Well, I guess I, I got one question. We got our local dairy, or Long Prairie Packing out here built this digester some years ago. And my understanding, and no guarantees, my understanding, there's never been any gas sold out of there. They said it was not financially feasible. So I guess, you know, that in mind, why is this one gonna be more feasible, financially feasible than what they have?
Yeah.
And I don't know if you know what they got out there, how it's built, constructed, I don't know anything about it, but.
I don't know anything about it either. I can just speak to the financial success of the projects that my co-CEO and I have done. The eight projects we did with our former employer, which are all up and running, all very successful. Our two projects we have running, which are beating their production forecast by 15% right now. Our two projects we have running, which are beating their production forecast by 15% right now. And we've been injecting gas for the past seven months, six months, since October. And the past four months, we've been averaging about 95% uptime on the plant. And we're exceeding the pipeline quality by quite a bit. It's actually, we're putting in better gas than what they would sell to us. So so far, our financial model is working for us.
I've read where some of these dairies, and I read that the numbers were 300 or over, are doing this kind of deal, but they're using that to power the engines to generate electricity. And they, the one article that I read, it said they have to have at least 300 to justify it.
Yeah, so that was probably the big push, probably the 2005 to 2010 timeframe. There was a lot of grant money being put out there to put those in. And at the time, solar and wind really hadn't taken off, so there was really good tariff rates for that electricity. What's happened is you just have this huge boom in solar and wind. And so that's where a lot of the effort has been to decarbonize electricity. But you're left with the other, so you have your wire coming into your house, which has lower and lower carbon emissions because, because of solar and wind, or nuclear, or hydro, or whatever else that you want to put in there, even conversion from coal to natural gas. What hasn't happened is there hasn't been a push on the other source of energy coming into your house, natural gas line. And so the push now has been, there's been, there's many ways to make low carbon electricity. There's very few ways to make low carbon natural gas. The conventional natural gas going into your house has a carbon intensity score of around positive 67. It's very complicated, but it means megajoules of energy, or it's metric tons of carbon net emissions per megajoule of energy produced. To give you an idea, diesel fuels a positive 94. So natural gas is positive 67. Ours is around a negative 220, meaning that we are essentially preventing greenhouse gases from going into the atmosphere. And then using this gas is actually a negative score. And that's why there's been such a demand for this. And there's been a big switch away from producing electricity to now producing renewable natural gas, because this is one of the few ways we can get natural gas to start getting more carbon neutral.
We'll get to the public comment in a minute here. No, we're not ready for that yet. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for him?
After the public comment.
Okay.
There were a couple of questions I saw up there, if you don't, that were asked on there, do you mind if I answer them?
I think you should go through them before.
What is the water usage of the digester annually? Nothing. So we're just, we're just zero. So we're just taking the manure out of the barns. If we need to thin it up, we would take parlor water that was already going to the lagoon and already being used. So zero. We'll install a bathroom for our employees, so 10 gallons a day. If they eat a lot of cheese germs, maybe 20 gallons a day, but somewhere around there, next to nothing. Let's hope there's a laugh on that.
Delayed.
Yeah. What happens to the pipe within the public right away if the pipe is ever abandoned? So if it's our pipe that would going over to the interstate pipeline, anything in the public right away would have to be made inert and safe before it was abandoned. In terms of the center point brings us down a line, that's Center Point's line. So they likely keep that in place and run it as a utility. But that's Center Point's decision on ours. Will additional feedlot sites be contributing to the manure to the digester? We talked about Timmer, Hollerman, and Word Spring also coming into there. I'd imagine it's about a quarter of the manure that's going to the digester ballpark, so. I talked about how the methane gas will be sold. The digester can process up to 150,000 gallons a day. We will not be close to that, and it's a two and a half million gallon digester. Those are all the questions I had there. Oh, and what are the hours of operations, it's 24/7?
Right, you went through that.
Yeah, 365.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. You'll have three minutes, you'll have to, I'll call on you, you come up to the podium, write your name.
Kerry Hurala, only thing, northern one, what length do I have them? Takes eight pounds to put it into the gas line, is that incorrect or correct? Evidently, your company, your procedure must have it. It's all they could produce is five pounds. They couldn't inject it into the gas line, so they just burn it.
Yeah, so, so the northern natural gas line, that interstate line, is I think north of 700 PSI. So we go in there, we have to put in a reciprocating compressor to compress it in there?
You're putting that much out, then obviously, I mean, it's been working for whatever plants you got going.
Yeah.
This one here was one of the failures, or whichever, it didn't produce enough pounds to put it in the gas line.
That would be a bad day, and we would, you wouldn't see my smiling face back here if that happened.
Any other public comment?
Greenhold, a neighbor to Dairy Ridge. I know you said this digester would take no water, but studies have shown where digesters are installed, herd size increases. Now we're right back to the issue of the severely declining B1 Aquifer. That's my major concern with everything Dairy Ridge does, is that Aquifer going to be able to handle increased cow numbers, which I'm sure we'll be, we'll be dealing with that. Digestors aren't emission free. They are known to emit sulfur oxide, particulate matter, carbon monoxide, and the worst is ammonia, which can travel long distance and contaminate water and soil. There's been satellite imagery done over digesters showing huge plumes of air pollution emitting from them. Digestors are only marginally effective at reducing odors. Manure digesters are an extremely inefficient method of energy production and would not likely exist in the United States if it wasn't for taxpayer subsidies. California calls it green energy and is pushing subsidies in Minnesota, but they don't count emissions from cows, feed production, digestate, or fossil fuels used for trucking hauling manure. Many digesters put in years ago are no longer in service because of the constant upkeep, including the packing plant digester, which is no longer in service, which was also put in with green money. A digester proposal has recently been voted down in Lynn, Wisconsin on behalf of their environment. I'm hopeful we can do the same thing here for our environment and citizens. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Roger?
I know it, I didn't think he wanted to hear from me. Do you want me to sign in again?
I think you should, so we know where you're at in the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I gotta wait till I talk though. Anyway, as far as the general public is concerned, all of the garbage we in agriculture endure as far as having manure on the road or something, hauled out and pollution with this Dairy Ridge thing. One of the neighbor ladies was complaining that the manure was running over onto her property. And to put it bluntly, and I guess I'm not, I don't know any statistics about neither one of these, but I know there was a natural gas pipeline put through the farm we live on when I was a kid in the 1950s. Never an issue with it, it pumps gas to staples in all little towns wherever. But in general, what I gathered here, I think it's a hell of a good plan compared to installing cow fart meters on all of our cows. How's that in a nutshell? That was quick, Roger. Thank you. And there have been people propose that in the past, what I just recited, that's where I picked it up at. But again, I don't know any of the technical stuff about it. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Roger?
Roger's Astro, Long Prairie. We live about a mile and three quarter from that dairy barn. If something can be done, if these things work, there's like 700 of them running in Wisconsin. I think California's in the 500 and some range, but a lot of theirs are bigger. These have a proven track record. Germany has somewhere around 10,000 of them running. This isn't new technology or fly-by-the-night stuff like some of the others have been. But if that works to reduce odor, we get a southwest wind, that's the direction. The only time we notice that farm is in the summertime when you've got the 90% humidity and 95 degree temperatures. But if that would help to reduce odors from that farm, I think that's one of the big benefits. And I think even in town, if you get a south wind, that would definitely be a big benefit.
Any other public comment?
Well, I guess according to the.
Did you say your name?
Oh, pardon me, Ray Becker. I live right next to Dairy Ridge on that six acres. Believe me, I'm as close as anyone can get to that outfit. And believe me, if you want stink, that is stink. And if the wind is perfectly out of the northwest, we get blasted really well. And it's not been so bad the last three, four years. They've done a lot with your compressing the manure and separating it, and they haul away the solids. But I said, this presentation that I see is picture perfect. But what's the flip side of it? What is, to me, I'm concerned about the methane escaping. What's the explosive nature of it? It'll blow me right off the map if that thing ignites. I mean, if that's that volatile, I'm fearful of it. And we have neighbors so close in this proximity, I mean, I feel the same way about it. If, if you can better something, why not do it? But there's nothing written in stone here that that's going to, to be. I mean, like I said, we live on that six acres, and I can't be any closer to it. They're watching what, what we do, we watch what they do. I mean, manure is a big, big issue here, there's no doubt about it. That's all I can say at this point. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
In the back there.
Chris Westberg. I was just, came back recently from Germany, and I will say that digesters are common on every farm. They're absolutely scattered everywhere, they're a dime a dozen. They're trying to utilize the smell to make it into money. They're not letting all their fumes just go up into the air. And I would challenge people to go out to Central By, we plow snow out there. They got a cover over one of their lagoons to try, they're just burning the gas off into the air. And yes, when that flame goes out, there is a terrible rotten odor smell. But then, as soon as they know there's a problem, they got to relight it to keep burning these gases off. The same with the packing plant. They're taking basically room and manure, green sawdust out of the barn. They're working with a very less than ideal type of product. When that digester went in, the person that takes green sawdust that they use for bedding should have known what that ties up into your program. So I mean, I would challenge, when you talk about looking at the satellites and the stuff, look at the packing plant digester there that's been operating for how long now, or been there putting whatever into the atmosphere. Look at Central By's lagoons up there that are burning off gas for how many years? And see that what, they're burning off all the gas, they ain't capturing any of it. And look at all the trees, still green, green grass, everything growing in the area. So I think this here is a way to help the manure that's already produced be made into something other than waste. Thank you.
Somebody over.
Paul Seagull, Long Prairie Township. This one question, Ray kind of talked about it, about the, being an explosion type thing. My question to you is what kind of safety is there from, let's say this thing gets a glitch? I understand you guys, there's the gas, maybe your company's different, but from what I understand, it's a dirty gas. It has to be cleaned up to get to the pipeline.
Yep.
And there's slam valves to shut the gas off if there's a glitch. There's monitors that can read how dirty the gas is, am I right?
Correct.
All right, so what happens? The slam valve shuts, you got dirty gas that isn't going to make the gas. How do you get rid of that? If the digester is producing methane, how do you safely do that? Do you burn it off? And how often would it be doing that? If, I mean, obviously, what you're, how often do you, is something like that going to happen? I mean, like Ray said, he's worried about, you know, an explosion. And I'm assuming there's pressure reliefs built into the system for that. And where would this flame be burning this off if the gas wasn't clean enough to bake the pipeline? Up by the, by the pipeline itself, or is the pipeline, is it right up by the dairy?
Am I allowed to ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Questions? Okay. So what, the, it goes to a candlestick flare. So there's two destruction devices that we have. Normal operations, we're running our plant, and the gas we want goes into the pipeline. Gas we don't get, want, goes in a big oven called a thermal oxidizer, heats up to 1,400 degrees. It takes that toxic gas, and actually, the gas are more concerned about than methane is hydrogen sulfide, that rotten egg smell, because it is toxic. By the way, the methane and hydrogen sulfide are already there, they're coming out of the lagoon. It's going, the lagoon's doing the same thing our digester does. But, so the, the, as soon as the plant shuts, the tox basically destroys the hydrogen sulfide, converts it to sulfur dioxide. When the plant shuts down, and will shut down, over the next 20 years, and we're signing a 20-year contract with the dairy for this, the pipeline will shut us down, we have our own instrumentation to shut us down before we get to the pipeline, we'll do maintenance on the plant. And you're right, you can't just shut off the digester. It's two and a half million gallons of, of liquid that's being heated up, it's kind of like turning a battleship. It takes days to turn off a digester. So that gas goes to a candlestick flare. And we have two ignition sources on that, a pilot on that, and the gas goes right up there. This is commonplace in the oil and gas industry for the past 100 years. Goes up, flame comes out. For our projects that we've been running for, since October, you know, the first month, obviously, you're starting a plant, up near flares on more often than not. But in the past, since January, we've been running 94, 95% uptime of the plant. So the flare is only on maybe 5% of the time. We have backup generator system, such that if we have a power outage, the flare is one of the key things that we keep running, so we destroy it. But let's say the flare fails to light, okay? Well, you could be venting gas up the flare. Let's say there's a blockage somewhere. On each one of our places where we have gas, we have emergency pressure leaf valves. In our plant, that's clean gas there. And so you just have to worry about methane, we design them for air dispersion high enough where you don't have to worry about risk. As a matter of fact, you know, we've got our own employees there, and we don't want to have explosion risk. Frankly, that, that explosion area is very small, and we. and we limit it to what's called a Class 1 Div 2 area, which means the equipment we put in cannot be spark-producing. It has to be specialized equipment. Let's say it comes out of the top of the digester. We do have a massive pressure leaf valve on the top of the digester. It is 92 feet in the air. And when we do air modeling, not only... Again, methane is not what I'm worried about, because as soon as you drop below 12%, it's not flammable anymore. What I worry about is hydrogen sulfide. And then we do mo... We do air modeling using computer programs. If I was a person standing on the ground 100 feet away from that digester, would I be okay? And the answer is yes on the air modeling. The gas coming out could be up to about 6,000, 7,000 ppm H2S, okay? The OSHA immediate health risk is 100. But by the time you're standing 100 feet away on the ground, you're about 8 ppm is what it was been modeled. So you're well below the OSHA immediate. Will it smell? Yes, it'll smell just like the lagoon does right now, coming out of there. Is this something we want to do? No, that's why it's an emergency. But even in an emergency, people around that digester will be safe. Certainly neighbors who are hundreds of feet away or half a mile away will be safe. It might smell a little bit more, and we'll fix that, but it's not a toxic or it's not an explosion risk. In terms of pipelines, it goes in the 811 system. They're all properly marked. And frankly, yes, hitting a gas pipeline that's pressurized with an excavator is a bad day. That's why call 811 before you dig.
Another question is, where would the route of the pipeline? Would it be running down the state right-of-way ditch? Or is it gonna come... Would you take it right down across their fields to the northern... I'm thinking of the northern...
Yeah.
Pipeline, which is just... It's actually on the Gullnuts property, and that runs through Todd County, mostly east to west. So is it gonna go right across the field or down state highway?
It's the yellow line you see there. So it comes down, and it goes across... I'm sorry, I can't read the name of the road there. But it crosses a road, it doesn't go across a ditch. And then it stays on the dairy's property the entire time.
Okay.
If it goes to Center Point, they just sent it this to me this morning. You're welcome to look at it, but this is the route that it takes if they're proposing for Center Point. I don't have influence over Center Point on which route they take.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Me again. Jody Bibo. Mine is an emotional statement of fact. Today, as we returned to our home in Long Prairie, we reached the outskirts of town at the hospital. And my husband looked at me and said, "Oh, we're coming home to the smell." So the smell is there. We've also lived at our current address on the Long Prairie River, directly south of Central By, and for 45 years, we have smelt. And it... It still smells today.
Any other public comment?
With the smell thing, that's one of my concerns as well. And I read in there about an ordinance. Well, if there's an ordinance for the amount of smell, and so what? How come we're getting all that smell from Central By, two and a half miles away? We're smelling it day and night over there. I realize this isn't about that. But I think the other insinerator on that end of town is also giving off smell, not just Central By. I don't know any of this for a fact, just from driving by and where the smell comes from. But the point is, is if it says in there that to... I'm sorry, I forgot the wording, but basically, that they have to a certain amount of smell factor, whatever. The county or whatever. How come... Is that gonna be policed, considering these other places have not been policed? That's not the right word, but whatever you want to call it. That's a concern. You know, do we need more smell? I'm totally for farmers. I'm whatever. It has not... I'm not afraid of the smell of cow manure. But this stuff does not smell like cow manure. It smells worse. And the other thing is about the water and what both you said. I don't know what is true, but I do know that in our area, we've already had a couple neighbors have to drill wells. Because... Which is not your part, but you know, because of the irrigators and all that. So are you really only using 10 gallons? Or is that just, you know... I just... I don't know.
I'm only putting it in the bathroom.
But how do you... Doesn't water run into there?
So...
No. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So the dairy certainly uses water. They use it to... For cows to drink, right? This is... We use water, cows use water, right? There's urine that comes out. Sometimes it's used for cooling at certain dairies. That water makes its way into the manure stream, as is right now, and is currently going to the lagoon. Instead, that water and manure mixture will go into our digester. But our process isn't adding anything that the dairy isn't already doing.
Well, my biggest question, like I said, was...
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Alicia Norman. It sounded like there were several farms, including Dairy Ridge, that are going to be... I think there was like four.
Yes.
Is this project still feasible if Dairy Ridge doesn't get approved for their increase in cow units?
So this project is separate from the dairy's expansion?
Yes, that's... This is completely different.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Chris Larson, Long Prairie Township. Can you just clarify, as we look at where all the impact is of Dairy Ridge, what's actually, if anything, going across the other areas that are in the black line? That's just, now that you clarified where the digester is, what's the impact on the other areas, if any?
The reason we requested them to include that in their application, that those parcels are a part of the application, is because of the pipeline. The one you had proposed outside of the more recent one was the yellow line. We had proposed outlined here includes all those other parcels to get it up to the right-of-way right here. That's the only reason those other pieces of land are involved.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name's Veronica Boss. I live right next to...
This is the proposed Center Point pipeline.
I... No, I want to know one. I want to know that yellow line that goes up there to the 287. Is that right next to my property?
So the... I don't know exactly where your property is.
The map, so to clarify, is it gonna be the gas line that they're running over to tie into, correct?
Yeah, so the blue line is the existing Northern Natural Gas interstate line. The yellow line that goes over there is the proposed pipeline.
I see it going over there. I want to know when it goes up to, to the road.
This stretch right here.
Yes.
Oh, that is a electric. So we're gonna have to run electric down from the road, because we have some instrumentation compression right there at the north.
Is that through the property, or is it at the end of the property?
That would stay on the dairy's property with the proper setbacks.
I also want to ask the board why we didn't get notices about this.
Your property is this one, if you... Oh, gosh, I can't see my mouse up there. This one right here?
Yes.
I'd have to review that to know what our mailing list looks like, but...
I got notices in February, but I didn't get a notice for this one.
Yeah, you should have. We'll have to review our list. The noticing distance is 500 feet. So those that are maybe a little further away, you know, out, when you get a little slightly further away, you're not going to get the notice. But from that black boundary...
I'm right there.
Ray, did you get the notice for this? Yeah, yeah. And so it's 500 feet. So I'd have to look at your specific scenario before I give you an answer.
Get the notice?
I don't know. We'll have to look at those separately.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment?
In the back.
William Norman. How's this gonna affect everybody's property value?
Yeah.
Do you have any...
We do.
Information on that, on other places you've had it?
Yeah, and so our Maple Row Dairy actually talked about that. And they have seen no reduction in property values around there. Matter of fact, on all our... Most of our projects, the farmers live like literally right there. Typically, at least these two have beautiful properties. They have not seen any reduction in property values. Our hope, I can't promise this, but with less odors coming out, that it should help things.
What is the lifespan of this complex?
Yeah, so we have... We're gonna contract with the dairy for 20 years. And there's obviously renewals after that, potentially. These sort of digesters have been around and functioning for over 30 years. I don't know the exact lifespan on them, but... And obviously, we have to do maintenance or replace things over time.
Have you been involved in projects where, after that 30-year lifespan, they've re-upped and re-equipped? Or is that kind of, they just shut down, clear out?
So I've been involved in projects where I didn't put in the digester, but in the 2005, 2006 timeframe, a digester was put in, and we converted it from electricity to renewable natural gas. And then we did a lot of maintenance and refurb on the digester itself when that happened.
And that was that about a 30-year lifespan?
Yeah. I mean, I can't give you an exact number. I just know that there are digesters of this style by this manufacturer running for the past 30 years.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, Roger.
Roger's Astro, Long Prairie Township. I've been at several of these meetings, because I was at the other meeting. As far as being noticed or notified of the event that is in public record, if people would get the leader, or I'm assuming it's in other publications, and take interest in what's going on in the county. I look at those every week, or every week when it comes out. I look at the Board of Adjustment ones especially, because I got a pet peeve with some of them. But there is public announcements out. You've just got to look at them. It comes out in the leader, what, a week before this meeting, every month, normally the first week of the month. So the second or third weekend, third week of the month, there is public notices out on all of your zoning meetings and stuff. It's somewhat up to some people to start taking interest in local events. You talked about attending township meetings and stuff. There's public notices of that put out.
It was on Long Prairie Radio with the news this morning.
It's been on for a week.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Don't stop, Roger.
I show her. She's gotta work in the morning.
Thanks, Roger.
Yeah, you have a good night.
Any other public comment? If none, we'll close the public comment, period, and open it up for board discussion.
I got a couple of questions for you. I probably... Well, I know I missed this in your presentation, but your digesting process produces some carbon dioxide too, right?
Yeah, so when...
And what happens to that? That's what my question is.
It goes to the thermal oxidizer and passes through the thermal oxidizer. It stays as CO2. Where the environmental benefit of this is, I mean, because even when like... Even when natural gas, this natural gas goes into engine and is burned, or is burned through the flare, you produce carbon dioxide in the process. What the environmental benefit of this is, is methane is way worse than carbon dioxide is, even though we hear about carbon dioxide on the news all the time. And so the fact that we're reducing methane, and even if we convert that methane through a flare or something, or stripping it out into carbon dioxide, it's better.
And then my second question then. Digesting process is a continuous process, right?
Yep.
You're not doing this in batches?
No, you put a gallon in, and then there's a little weird box on the top of the digester. So you put a gallon in, and then the level of digester goes up slightly, and it just kind of spills over the top of this box, and then goes off to the screw presses.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I feel like that was a good science lesson. I know as much as those kindergartens who are going there. But I would speak in support of this. I mean, farming has all kinds of environmental issues associated with it. We know that. But they're not gonna be made worse because of new technology like this that's entering the playing field now, which both reduces emissions and smells odors. I mean, I don't live next to it. If I did, I would feel strongly about what was already there. But there's no evidence that this makes things worse. And in fact, there's... I have a question about the return, the local return, not just the jobs, but there must be more money coming into the county to... Because there's profit sharing on this with the farmers, right?
Yeah, so farmers get 8% of the revenue that comes in.
What percent?
8%.
8%?
A as in alpha, percents. How much we pay our farmers is proprietary.
Well, I do know this, and I didn't mean to push you on a business point. That's your business. But I do know that when the Russian gas was cut off from Europe, the people were the happiest, were the farmers who had this technology locally in Germany and the Netherlands in particular, right? That's where most of this stuff is. Where industry... The industry of agriculture lives cheek and jowl with... There's just a lot more people living near agricultural areas there where there are... You said 10,000 of these?
Somebody mentioned that, but there are thousands of these in Europe, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this technology is coming, and it's gonna be terrific in a whole lot of ways, I believe. It's not gonna make things worse. But there are problems that are already there. Anyway, I'm in support of this.
I guess I would move that we approve this with the conditions we have up there.
I would second.
All right, we've got a motion by Ken and a second by George to recommend approval with eight conditions.
Roll call, Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Motion carried. It goes to the Commissioners on May 7th. You can be present at that meeting if you like. You can be present at that meeting if you like, but you don't have to be.
Request a five-minute recess.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break and-
I don't know if I wanna get up.
Technology in farming is gonna be-
Who didn't have any-
areas like this. With just less cash. It were way more.
Uh, this is just identifying, it's in shoreline zoning. The topography of the site, and wetlands of the site, and some site images here. All my labels moved, but here I'm looking east, the lake would be to my back, looking up the slope towards the proposed building site. Here, I'm looking west from the proposed building site, back towards Long Lake. Out on the road here, looking, this would be north down County 11. Flipped around, looking south down County 11. And this would be the survey stake for the northern property boundary, and it cuts kinda through, there's this house up on whatever, not placed down yet, but it kinda cuts up here through the center here. Here, I'm on the, looking west down the southern boundary. Dimensional features, it's an any lake, so it needs to be 80,000 square feet. It far exceeds that, buildable space of 40,000 square feet, it exceeds that. Matches the width requirement, far exceeds the depth requirement at 250 feet. Requires 50 feet of road frontage because it's platted, but it matches the width, so it has 200. Two suitable sites have been identified. There's no bluff impact zones, no severe steep slopes, soils consist of sandy loam, no wetlands, streams, or floodplains of concern. Vegetation is lawn grass or some woods along the lake frontage. This notice was sent to our dirt team or the review team back in February. We received no responses from many of the members, and the application was presented to Kendona Township back in February also. I did reach out to the township, got a response from them, they had no concerns. So, recommendation is motion to approve, with just the one condition that they abide by all applicable standards. That's my staff report, Mr. Chair.
Any correspondence?
We have none.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment.
No comment?
What do you left back there?
He's shaking his head no.
Say something.
I guess we'll close the public comment period then, and open it up for board discussion.
I have one question. Why, why does he have to apply to do this?
Because it's in shoreline zoning, the existing parcel they're splitting from is less than 40 acres. So any additional subdivision requires plating.
Thank you.
I was out on the site, visited, it's pretty straightforward, there's no concerns.
It's Long Lake, how many Long Lakes are there we have in our county?
A number of them.
I'm trying to figure out where it is.
This one is the, you know, Ferry Lake, Lily Lake, Long Lake.
Okay, bought by Ferry.
Yeah.
Ferry, Lily, and Long.
When they said Long Lake first, I was thinking of Long Higgins.
Yeah, well.
So, any board discussion?
Cause water keeps coming out.
I say, any, any board discussion, any questions, any?
Like you said, it's pretty straightforward.
I would move to approve as proposed.
We got a met, motion by George to recommend approval of the CUP with the one condition. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ken.
Roll call, Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, motion carried, goes to the Commissioners on the May 7th. You can be there if you like, but you don't have to be.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming over, Mark.
I was wondering if I could be put on the committee to decide the order of agenda items? I'll be the president. I don't know about that.
I think we owe you two gentlemen something for this one. So thank you.
Maybe first and second next time.
Got it. Thanks, Mark, we'll see you later.
All right, our next agenda item is Paul A. Hirschberger. You can have a seat.
All right, should I go to it?
Yep.
All right, again, Paul A. Hirschberger, parcel 200017300. This one also on County 11 at 24584, County 11, located in AF2 zoning. Request for wood processing, for production of windows, doors, posts, and some metal fabrication with signage, and do a building addition, and this is an AF2 zoning. It's out straight west of Long Prairie, right off of County 11. Here zoomed into the existing site. The plan is to put an addition on this building right here with the white roof going to the north. Also noted in this image, you can see how the driveway has two points connecting to County 11 for traffic flow and materials coming in. Oh yeah, here it's outlined, you can see where the proposed addition is with the sign up by the road, and they have some loading and parking area in the center of the yard there. This is identifying its AF2 zoning. Soils information here. Topography of the site, and wetlands, my apologies. So there's the structure, the addition would be planned to go to the left-hand side of this here. And then here, looking north down County 11, this is the northern driveway coming in or exiting the property. Then flipped around, looking south, and then turn around, looking east from County 11 into the property. And then just into the property, kinda looking at how the driveway connects up to County 11. And flipped around, this is the proposed business, so the expansion would be coming kinda towards where I'm standing. This is that secondary driveway, looking south, sorry, looking north at, I'm at the southern driveway, and then looking south from that southern driveway here, looking back into the property. All right, application considerations. One, is used in con, in conformance with the purposes of the comprehensive plan. Economic guiding principle number two is, look for local options first, but do not come un-isolationist. The comprehensive plan does not directly relate to this proposal, but it does promote the establishment of businesses and promotes economic growth in Todd County. Two, the establishment of the conditional use to not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties. The proposal will not have any impact on neighboring properties' ability to use or improve their property. Three, applicant in the opinion of the planning commission has demonstrated a need for the proposed use and is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. This proposal allows for the establishment of a business in Todd County that sells products in Todd County. Four, use to not create an excessive burden on infrastructure, including parks, schools, streets, or other public facilities or utili, or, and utilities which serve or are proposed to serve the area. There is no public infrastructure in the vicinity that would raise concerns with this proposal. Five, use to not create a pollution hazard or other detrimental environmental effects both during and after construction. Effects to be considered shall include, but not limited to, soil erosion and sedimentation, pollution or under degradation of surface waters and groundwater supplies, impact on water supply, inadequacy of sewage treatment. The proposal will not use any water resources, the septic system was inspected prior to application, and minimal disturbance to the site is proposed with the building addition. Six, inadequate measures have been or will be taken to sufficiently minimize traffic congestion, provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Traffic congestion is of minor concern and off-street parking is provided. The property has two driveways off of the county highway for traffic to flow through the site and provide for off-street loading and unloading space. Seven, adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, glare, appearance, and vibrations so that none of these will constitute a public nuisance. Main area of concern would be the dust and noise. The operation is proposed inside of an existing structure that will have the addition built on. This will mitigate for much of the concern. Additional concerns can be proposed, for, can, additional conditions can be proposed for further mitigation. Eight, the intensity of the proposed use is not inconsistent with the purpose of the ordinance and the purpose of the zoning addition which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Wood and fiber processing facilities and retail sales are both conditional uses in AF2 zoning. Recommendation is a motion to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners with the following conditions. One, outdoor storage of products shall be allowed and shall be conducted in compliance with section, excuse me, 901B of the Todd County Planning and Zoning Ordinance. That section refers to exterior storage. Two, there should be no loading or unloading materials within the road right of way. And three, the applicant must abide by all other applicable federal, state, and local standards. That is my staff report.
Any correspondence?
We have none on this one also.
All right, I guess we don't need to have public comment. So I guess we'll open it up for board discussion. I was on the site visit, he's got room for unloading and room for customers to come and bark, so none of that should be an issue and-
And I would suppose the noise shouldn't be too much, cause you're not, with what you're using, you're not having big engines, right?
No. And it's inside.
It's inside?
Yes. Inside.
Neighbors are not that close, I mean, you got carways across the road down a little bit.
Do you manufacture the windows there?
I'm just a dealer in them.
You're just a dealer, okay.
Yep, I wanna build laminated posts for pole sheds. That's what the wood processing.
Say it again?
They are laminated posts, they take two-by-sixes or two-by-eights, whatever they, the orders are, and they're finger jointed together, glued and nailed together in a three-ply post or four ply, so.
So if you wanna build a post building-
Yes, like a pole shed.
Instead of going out and sawing on a tree and using it for a shed. They're super strong.
Did you have a question, George, or?
So, but this is not for the sale of those products on there, it's just for the manufacturer?
No, these, yeah. Yeah.
Who are the buyers? So anybody-
Anybody who wants to build a pole barn comes to you.
Do you also sell the lumber yards and all, do you expect?
Yes, if I try to sell the lumber yards too. So, it'll be contractors, lumber yards, walk-ins, so.
I'll, I'd make a motion to approve this as written.
We got a motion by Roger to recommend approval with the three conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Lloyd.
Roll call, Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, motion carried, goes to the Commissioners on the 7th of May. You can be present if you like, but you don't have to be. You can be present if you like, but you don't have to be.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for waiting.
Anything else?
Yeah, just one comment. Uh, Arnie Boy has officially resigned from the planning commission. He moved in with his wife to assisted living, so, um, I don't know if we want to get something gathered as a board or what, saying thank you or anything like that, you just let me know, but Arnie has officially resigned as of Monday.
Arnie had Clarissa Ballroom. Lloyd, Lloyd's paying.
All right, we're in. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you said, uh, May 11th?
Seven.
Seven.
Sevens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do not need to be there though, unless you want to be, but you, I take this to the board for you. Yep.
You mentioned...
It's pretty straightforward, yeah.
Until then, nothing can happen, that's my place.
Right, yep, yep, and then after, after the meeting on the 7th, you can get in contact with us. We'll give you the update and we can go from there.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You mentioned you're a dealer, do you have combination storm windows?
I don't.
Okay, I need a few new ones.
Well, I have, I got aluminum windows there that are close to that.
Close.
It's not far of a drive for you to go over to his place, so...
Right. For a visitor.
That was the only topic I had, just wanted to inform everybody, I don't know what we want to do next, or what the County Board's going to do or anything like that. But George is going to be here filling in, in the meantime, while we search for the next person from that district.
Yeah, I would say we should at least get him a card, we can all sign.
Sure. Okay, I'll talk with Jamie, get one of her cards, and, um, then we'll have to figure out how to get everybody to sign it. We can send it to them.
A little note, I was doing well.
Sure, okay, I'll get that arranged, and then, um, either I'll catch up with you guys before the next meeting, or at the next meeting, we can send it up to them. Yep.
I just wanted to acknowledge that I have something on the agenda with my neighbor next week, or next month. So I don't know how you want.
That's for Board of Adjustments though. So it will not come to this board, but Ken will be there.
Well, at least I'll see you.
All right, I think that's it.
But so, but I'll still be serving as the alternate for Arnie on that, right?
Uh, uh, only on this board, not the Board of Adjustments.
Oh, good.
Yep, only this board.
Oh, all right, so relieved.
Arnie wasn't on the Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry.
Ken, Ken's our only crossover member to satisfy that piece of the requirement. But I have nothing else, just a motion to adjourn.
All right, we got a motion adjourned. Motion by Ken, is there a second? Roger? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
That was, that was quite a interesting.
The digester company did a pretty very good job.
In that...
We have to be meeting, that whatever the credit union like, gave us a barrel of them, so... I'll stop putting them in there now.
I, I wouldn't.